I'd like to call the meeting to order, please, for the Town Council meeting for Thursday, February 12th, 2015. Would you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I have a request I'd like to make of the council. With agreement of the council, I would like to request the council suspend the rules and move Old Business Number One, which is the Kinder Morgan Proposed Northeast Energy Direct Pipeline Project, to be four appointments on the agenda.
Seconded.
Okay, can I finish my question? As soon as I finish, please do that again. All future information would be presented before any appointments for foreseeable future agendas, so in the future, they would remain in that position. Now, I would accept a motion.
Seconded.
Motion by ... Seconded by Bill. Okay, any discussion about this? All those in favor?
Aye.
Seven, zero, zero. Excellent. With that having been done, I would like to address that right now, okay?
You moved it ahead of announcements or ahead of appointments?
Ahead of announcements. Did I ... well, hold on. I did say appointments, I meant announcements. Would you amend that motion to say announcements?
I'll accept an amendment.
Seconded.
Thank you for that clarification. All those in favor with the amendment?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Okay, since it is before the announcements, thank you for pointing that out. Okay, as you can see, what I'm going to do is address the items as listed on the agenda in the order, informational reports and updates. Okay, so let me just get my little guidance notes here. Okay, regarding the section to allow Kinder Morgan to survey four town parcels and regarding the survey letters. A letter was received by Kinder Morgan requesting that the town give permission to survey four town parcels. In the backup information that was presented, those town parcels are identified and a copy of that letter is also in there. We have referred this to Town Council Attorney and will be advised as to what to do, so for right now, there's no action, but it will be determined in the future. I just want to make sure you got that update. The second one, request for information from ACOM. ACOM is an environmental contractor of Kinder Morgan, and the letter we've received really has to do with asking for information about sensitive environmental areas. Now, I'm going to introduce this and talk a little bit more later. On Wednesday, we had a meeting with an environmental attorney, and we had the following people in attendance. We had the Merrimack Village District, we had the Conservation Commission, we had the Director of Community Development, we had Sewer Department, we had the Fire Department, and some town councillors, and did I miss anyone? We'll talk more about it later, but anyway. Nashville Regional Planet Commission, thank you. And what we did is we discussed a lot of things, which I'm going to go into later, but this was one of them. It was decided that this attorney, which we have engaged, we'll talk about more later as well, is going to provide, get information and provide some guidance to all of us as to how and when should we respond, if we do, how should we? So again, that's something that I wanted to report to you. It is not determined, but it is in process, okay? Yes?
You said some town councillors?
Okay, certainly. Tom Mahan was present as the Vice Chair, Lon Woods was there related to the MVD. Okay, thank you very much.
To make it more clear, it wasn't a majority.
Absolutely, there was not. Okay, Section 106 of the National Historic Preservation Act. That really is to let us know that at some point in the process, FERC will initiate this, and we're going to be able to have to keep an eye on it. So what I'd like to be able to do is put it on our action list, so that we make sure that we maintain attention to it, because we're going to have to keep an eye on what they say about that. And that's all I have to say about that. I am going to add one more thing, which is just a little discussion about the meeting with the environmental attorney. As I just mentioned, we had a meeting with an environmental attorney, Joanna Tarango, who has 15 years' experience with FERC. As I mentioned earlier, there was MVD Conservation Commission, NRPC Fire Chief, Sewer Department, Community Development Director, and we discussed the entire process, including the survey letters, the ACOM letter, the timing, the process, the expectations and responsibilities of the town, as well as Kinder Morgan, as well as FERC. As anyone who's starting to look into this, and I know a lot of people are, is a very lengthy, a very complex process, that's very difficult for people to get a handle. This attorney, environmental attorney, who has all this experience, we have in fact hired her to help us, guide us through the process, to protect our interests, to protect the town's interests, to provide information to all of us, so that we make sure that all of the partners, Kinder Morgan, FERC, us, are well-informed, within the time of the process that we have to do, and that we're making deliberate, smart decisions, okay? So we will, as we receive information, we've asked for some things, survey, give us pros and cons, we're going to be providing documentation for the website as we receive documentation, okay? Does that please ... Eileen, you were there as well, Tom, anything to add that I just said? Again, it's a summary, but as an individual, I felt much more comfortable that we had someone, you know, backing us up, keeping an eye on us, to make sure we didn't mess anything. One of the things I wanted to stress is, which made me feel much more comfortable, more than once did she say how happy she was to be engaged in the process because it's so early. You're really early in the process, I'm going to be able to help you from this very early stage. So that made me much more comfortable, and hopefully, for all those who are interested, that will help your comfort level as well, okay? Anything else? Okay, action items. We had provided, while I was gone, it was provided, by Mr. Mahan, a list of action items, and I just want to quickly document, is this mine? I think it is. Document where we are on the action item list. And what we're going to do is each time we, in every meeting, we will update people as to where we are in the action item list, okay? So this is just going to be a procedure that we quickly do. Okay, continue to press KM for a public meeting in Merrimack. Eileen, you want to update us?
I received a call from Matt Abdelfar, who is, who works for Kinder Morgan on the 2nd of March, and all he said to me was, "Just want to make sure you know we're still on for March." I said, "Do you know what date?" He said, "No."
The date, the date you gave us, the 2nd of March is the date, it's not ...
He called me on March 2nd.
February.
February, I'm sorry. Excuse me. Sue me.
So as soon as we know the date, we'll make that public as well. Okay, request the council to take no action regarding a request from Kinder Morgan to survey town unparcels until Merrimack Public Meeting. Well, actually, that's a moot point right now, too, because as we've mentioned, we've hired an attorney, we're not going to do anything in terms of responding until we get guidance from her, okay? Place NED Pipeline update on future council agendas, that has been done, it was initiated tonight, and everyone knows where it's going to be placing the agenda from now on. Update list of properties that directly abut proposed pipeline route with a list of properties that fall into pipeline hazard zone. Eileen?
We have done that. What we did was identified properties on either side of the 200 feet, on either side of the, what they call the study corridor, and we have a list of them, and I, you know, to move on to the next one, I have spoken to this representative from Kinder Morgan, asking him for their lists, and have not received that yet. So we have our list, they're going to give us their list, and then we'll compare the two.
And make sure that everybody's been notified, okay? Consider consultant to research community's property value, effects of recent pipeline installations, evaluate impacts on the sewer line. We have acquired Avatar, who does our assessing now, to complete that research, to get that information. So that is in process, but it has been initiated. Support Conservation Commission efforts to up ...
Excuse me, Nancy, I think the Sewer Department is engaging someone?
Yes.
They are.
They are.
Ray Pierce?
We got to the other one.
Ray Pierce, okay, thank you, Ray.
I'll put that down. Ray Pierce?
Yeah.
Support Conservation Commission's effort to update data for environmental impacts on hostile nature preserve in Gilmore Woods. Tom, would you like to make any comment about that?
Well, no, we ... Tim Tenhave was at the meeting on Tuesday, and they're moving ahead with their efforts to update the information that they've developed over the last few years about the conservation issues, wildlife issues, habitat issues, those sorts of things. And so at this point, you know, we are doing that in that regard, and making sure that if they need our assistance, we're going to provide it to them.
Exactly. And having them at that meeting, I think they were very happy to be there, too, because they received guidance and know, knows that the attorney can provide guidance as well. Okay, support Merrimack Village District's effort to protect wellhead protection zone and aquifer protection. Again, they did attend that meeting, and they were very happy to be there as well. Lon, do you have anything you want to add?
Not in regard to the wellhead protection and aquifer protection zones as of this date, but I would like the public and the council to know that MVD and the Conservation Commission have agreed that we, that the MVD will also use their consultants, scientists, whatever, as they take a fresh look at their wildlife and plant species.
On there.
On any MVD land that abuts them, so.
Nice.
We're working hand in hand with them, and very happy to do it. Thank you.
Very nice. Okay, request KM list of abutters, that you already mentioned, that we're waiting for that, so we can do a comparison. Work with property owners to develop a list of who has been identified of the project and requests for surveys. Again, and once we get those two lists, we can verify, but any abater who knows that they're in a butter and has not received any information, if you want to call us and let us know, we'd be able to, that would give us ahead-of-time information as well. Maintain contacts at FERC and New Hampshire Congressional Delegation, that is ongoing. Consult with PSNH regarding where they are in the process with Kinder Morgan and PUC. They have been notified, we have not received any information from them as yet. Consultant share information with large companies. There is a meeting scheduled for February 26th, where all the companies, interested companies in the area have been invited to this meeting for information. Is that correct, Eileen? And I have added already that Section 106 of the Federal National Historic Preservation, again, just to be able to keep an eye on it as time goes on, okay? So that's where we're at, and we'll review that every time and update and add or delete. Okay, under normal circumstances, I don't have to, but I have the privilege, and I'm going to do it, if anyone wants to make a comment at this point, rather than waiting to the public comments section, you're welcome to do so. So if you'd like to do that, please feel free to come up. If not, that's okay, too. I'm saying none, okay? So we can proceed. There are announcements right here, let me get the announcement folder. Okay, the town office, hall offices will be closed on Monday, February 16th, for the observation of President's Day, good thing, because it's going to be closed because of snow, anyway. This is unbelievable. Thursday, February 26th, at 7:00 PM, regular council meeting here in the Matthew Thornton Room. Wednesday, March 11th, at 7:00 PM, in the James Mastercola Upper Elementary School All Purpose Room. There will be the deliberative session, the first session of the annual meeting. And on Thursday, March 12th, at 7:00 PM, here in the Matthew Thornton Room, regular council meeting. Recognition, resignations, and retirements. I'm sorry, I went too fast. Comments from press and ...
Announcements.
I'm sorry.
I think I have to announce.
Well, no, I don't want to renounce anything. I'm only kidding. Announcements.
Okay.
She's tracked enough, we don't ...
2015, what did you say? Okay. 2015 dog licenses are available at the town clerk's office. Please register dogs four months and older by May 1st. If you no longer have your dog, please contact the town clerk's office at 424-3651, so that they may update their records. Records that are not updated result in the tax office having to follow up on an unlicensed dog wasting valuable time and tax dollars. The 23rd Annual Winter Carnival will take place with snow.
For the fifth or sixth time.
On Saturday, February 21st, from 12:00 to 3:00 PM. We have a lot of snow, as I just said, and a lot of free family activities for the day. So if anyone has any questions, please call the Parks and Recreation Department at 882-1046. That's all.
I was just asking, there's a snow date. I don't know. Let's not even worry about it.
It's like canceling the Boy Scout Klondike Derby, because it's snow. Come on.
That's pretty funny. Okay, now we can go on to comments from the press or public. Anyone who would like to make comments regarding any of the pieces of agenda, feel free to come up now. Nobody's in the mood, okay? Recognitions, resignations, and retirements, there are none. Appointments, there are none. You want to say something, Paul? No. Ah, okay, we are now going to start the public hearing regarding the proposed municipal 2015-16 operating budget and warrant articles, and you need a few minutes to set up. Go right ahead. We're going to have a council recess in order for you to set up. Okay, I guess we can restart the meeting, and Eileen and Paul are going to be presenting an overview of the 2015-16 budget. Go right ahead.
Okay, as you know, our, the department heads, we've been through a process where the department heads have submitted their budgets to, individual budgets to me. Paul has prepared all of the salary and benefits data for each of the departments. They've come back to me, and we, and I made adjustments to the budget from what the department heads requested and brought it to you. So what you're seeing tonight is the budget as adjusted by you. So that spreadsheet that was done a few weeks ago, where there were various things that were added and subtracted, are included in this now, and this is now your budget to decide whether you want to modify it or not. So in summary, we're going to give a kind of a generalized summary, and if anybody has any more detailed questions, we'd be happy to answer them. We try and do our budget and break it down between different categories, because with the capital reserve fund deposits going in and out, and having revenue and expenditure implications, it makes for, sometimes the various budgets appear to be much larger or much smaller than they were the other, in prior years, because of these capital reserve one-time purchases and things like that. So we've removed them out, and taken a look at the 2014-15 operating budget. So under appropriations, over on the left, it says general fund operating budget, voted 2014-15 was $21,221, $221,200. Proposed $21,448,186, which is an increase of $226,000, $227,000, which, so for the operating budget, shows an increase of one, a little over 1%. We'll get into some of the details, general details about that in the next slide. Capital reserve fund deposits. We increased the capital reserve fund deposits. One of the reasons why we had done that, that's something that we've been trying to do over, over the years, from three or four years ago, when the capital reserve funds were getting depleted, and by, sort of by necessity, they were reduced in order to keep, in order to offset some of the enormous increases that we saw in retirement and health insurance and things like that. So we've been trying to slowly build those up. One of the reasons why you see an increase in capital reserve fund deposits, a big part of it is $200,000 for, that we added to the road, road ...
Road infrastructure.
Infrastructure, capital reserve, because we needed that, we needed, we used to, we normally had $600,000 a year in that. This year, last year, it went down to $400,000. We brought it back up to $600,000, and the reason why is because we use that money to offset the bridge aid program. So $300,000 represents the ...
Twenty percent.
Represents the cost of just one bridge, our 20% cost. So you'll see increases in that, because we have several bridge projects that are lined up back-to-back that we need to save for, and we need to get them while the getting's good, because we've been very fortunate to have those. Other capital expenditures, really insignificant in terms of dollars. Road resurfacing, that is $750,000 this year. It was modified in order, as you recall, by you, to add some money for Watson Park renovations, as well as add some money for consultants and attorneys relative to the pipeline project. And the two, the colored ones, so the green, at the top, you see appropriations, and at the, the first category is appropriations, the second category is revenues. So when you get, when you look at the colored items, so for instance, capital reserve fund expenditures, you'll see an exact amount of appropriation as you see as revenue. So we've pulled those out, and, so that you could see that they come in and out. It doesn't affect the tax rate this particular year. Self-supporting funds, that is primarily the wastewater treatment fund. It also includes special details, and for the police details, it includes the summer camp and a few other things.
The water district we have.
Just a few other things. So anyway, you see those on both sides of the equation, going in, going out, and coming in, in the exact same amount. So why this is important is because appropriations are what you're voting on, but the tax rate is derived by taking the appropriations, subtracting out revenues that we receive from other sources, sources other than tax, property tax revenue, and then you add in your abatements, the cost for abatements, and your veterans credits. You take that net amount to be raised by taxes, and you divide it by the town's value, which is currently at $2,945 million, and divide that by 1,000, because it's per thousand. So the tax rate is projected to be $5.54 for the town's portion, and that represents an eight cent, or 1.41% increase. Here are some of the expenditure, some of the reasons for the expenditure increases and decreases. We added, we added, and you so far have concurred, a part-time person in, at the solid waste, solid waste facility, and one at the, I mean, at the transfer station, a part-time person in the tax collector's office, and a part-time person in the code enforcement office. You have also added two new police officer positions, which are a big part of that $200,000 increase for, for operating expenses, for operating budgets, the difference. The library, we added a, changed a part, two part-time positions into one full-time position, which adds costs because ... which adds costs because it adds benefits. In general, New Hampshire retirement rates increased quite a bit. Health insurance, we, there was a significant savings in health insurance, and the reason for that is because it's the third year of the five contracts that have been settled so far. We'll be getting to the sixth one after this, there'll be a presentation on that. It's the end of the third, the third year of a three-year contract where the employees changed their, had a significant change to the details and benefits of their health insurance. So, there were, there were savings throughout the budget on health insurance. Again, the increase in capital reserve fund deposits, I talked about that a little bit The town council continues its commitment to including all of the anticipated expenditures in the budget so that the voters get the complete picture regarding town expenditures and revenues. If a capital item is eliminated, the offsetting capital reserve revenue would also need to be eliminated, which would not impact the tax rate, and that's what I was talking about. We have money set aside in capital reserve funds that have already been appropriated by, by placing them in the budget. They go over into what I refer to as a savings account, and they're sitting there. When we make the, when we need the money, we take it out. It comes in as revenue, it goes out as an expense, but it was already saved from before. So, that's what we're talking about when we talk about offices, revenues and expenditures on these capital reserve fund expenditures. And here are some of those expenditures here. This year, we are proposing capital reserve fund expenditures in the general fund of That includes state bridge aid on the Bean Road Bridge. The town's portion on that is $320,000, and the state portion, which is 80%, the town is 20%, $320,000. The state is 80%, $1,280,000. So, again, that, that state aid bridge money is coming in and it's going out, but because we gross appropriate, we need to put it in there. So, you see continuing of upgrading our licenses and servers. The fire department, we have played, we have put in an expenditure for a allotment of SCBA breathing apparatus for the fire department. That, as has been said to you from the fire chief, we have applied for a grant for that, but we won't, won't know about that until June. And when that, when we do hear, we plan to apply for it again. So, there'll be two, two rounds of that. But we put money in the budget in case we didn't get the grant so that we could put, purchase some of this breathing apparatus, and we also increased our, our deposits into that savings account, as I would call it, or capital reserve fund in order to have enough money to pay for them in the future as well. So, the, then there's an ambulance, a replacement ambulance. As I said, the Bean Road Bridge replacement, 20% of the cost. Drainage improvements, which we do every year. And DW Highway, we've saved up enough money to pave the remainder of the town's part of, the town's responsibility for DW Highway within our, within our urban compact from Chamberlain Bridge to Reed's Ferry Lumber, which is a cost of $400,000. There's also an expenditure for a six-wheel dump truck for the highway department and a front-end loader. So, yes?
I was wondering, you have two columns there, one with dollar signs on top and one without. What are the, what's the difference in those two columns?
I'll tell them. The, the, the one where there's dollar signs there, that doesn't necessarily, the dollars don't mean, those dollar signs don't mean anything. But what, what it is, is if you take the $320,000 and the $100,000, you add them up and it goes over to the following, to the end column. So, so the $420,000 is the subtotal, and if you take $155,000 and $150,000, that subtotals to $305,000. We just carried over to the next column and added.
Okay, thank you.
So, in the sewer fund, again, which is paid for by sewer user fees, there is a proposal to purchase a Ford F-250 pickup for $35,000, some manhole sewer line repair for $75,000, and a Bobcat Tool Cat for cross-country sewer maintenance for $75,000. Those three things total $185,000. So, the total requested purchases from capital reserve funds that already exist is $2,907,334. These are the deposits. So, what we talked about was taking money out of the existing, what, what I refer to as savings accounts or, or capital reserve funds. This is what we deposit in. What you deposit in is what affects the tax rate because it's not money coming out of another account and being spent. What it is, is it's being raised by taxes and put over into those savings accounts. So, we, we have set a goal for ourselves in the past because this is where often the budget gets cut, as I said, sometimes out of necessity because there's, there's, sometimes there are such extravagant increases in, beyond our control that maybe that year we need to cut back on some of those things. So, we, these are ongoing capital reserve funds that were originally established by the voters. They're very specific, they're very, for very specific purposes. Computers, milfoil, as you can see, milfoil went down a little bit. We're getting a better handle on it. We'll be hearing a presentation a little bit on that later on, at the, later on in the meeting. Not only are we getting better at, at coming up with a number, but we're also starting to get a hold of it. So, it's not, we haven't waited several years, so now all of a sudden, it's got, gotten to the point where we need to really race ahead and spend a lot of money to do it. We've been, we've been managing it, which is the best that anyone can really hope for. We've placed a little bit more money into the fire ambulance capital reserve, which again is to save for ambulances when we need one to be replaced. And the reason why we increased it a little bit is because the costs are going up for ambulances. Fire equipment, that is what I was talking about when I said that we started increasing the amount that we're putting into fire equipment because we are going to be purchasing this SCBA equipment from here. Then communications equipment, that's a big jump. That was something that we talked about during the budget process that has to do with the overhaul of the police communication system. As you know, it was, it was discussed that we might pay for the first component this year, the $54,000 this year, and then we need to start saving for the second component, and then there'll be one more component later on for a total of around $500,000. Again, roads and bridges, that has been increased. We've started saving for more because we've got the bridges coming, that we need to have our 20%, we need to have our 20% amount of money, and it also includes reconstruction projects, is that correct?
Drainage and reconstruction.
Drainage and reconstruction, okay. DW Highway, the reason why we can do it this year with $400,000 is because we save $50,000 a year until it's time to do it, and then we take it out of the bank and we do it. So, on a regular basis, every year we put in $50,000 for that very purpose, only DW Highway. Solid waste equipment, we've reduced that a little bit. Paul?
Instead of buying new trailers, what we did is we went and relined them. And by relining the trailers at a, at a cost of $10,000, we feel we can get another four to five years out of them. So, by being able to do that, we were able to stretch out the amount of money we need to put in, in order to buy those new trailers. So, that's why we were able to decrease that about $30,000 this year.
Traffic preemption, we didn't put any money in there last year. We normally do put some money in there. What that is, traffic signal, preemption is the, the piece of equipment on a traffic signal that the, the fire department can, can affect when they want to go through, they need to go through a light in an emergency. And, can the police department do that?
Police, police do have it as well.
Yes. GIS, this is another big increase. What's the matter?
Just commenting on your choice of words, it's actually control the light, not go through it.
Oh. Are you going to check every word that I say? So, GIS, GIS is, as you know, we have, we have, it, it has come very strongly to our attention how important the GIS system is, very recently. So, the better, more GIS information that we can have, the better. So, we really see the, the need for more and more sophisticated GIS equipment. There's a project that's proposed to occur, there's one more allotment proposed to go into the capital reserve fund deposits, and we will be doing a, an overhaul and flyover of, of the town for, to update the GIS system, yes?
And continuing on that, in that vein, if you recall, we had the meeting on Tuesday, the, Tim Roach told us that of all the towns in Hillsborough County and all the towns that are in the National Regional Planning District, only Merrimack and Hudson are, are positioned to take advantage of the information. Because we made the investment in, in the GIS system and the other towns haven't done that, so it puts us in a, puts us in a much better position to be able to, to delineate the zones and the areas that we're dealing with, with the various layers that we have in that. So, the investment that we made prior to this is already paying off for us.
Yeah, that's a short point. Then the library has set aside money, I believe this $10,000 is toward saving up for a roof when they need a roof again. As, as I said, not only the expenditures are the important factors in how the budget works, what it comes, all, all it comes down to is the tax rate, and the tax rate can only be, be determined by reducing the amount of expenditures by revenues that we receive from other sources. The largest source of revenue that the town receives that's not property taxes is motor vehicle permit revenues, and that totals very close to $4 million of the $8 million that we take in. We saw an increase in interest on income tax, in interest on tax liens, not income tax liens, interest on tax liens. We saw an increase in the state rooms and meals taxes in our revenue projections, an increase in current use change taxes for some projects that are on the horizon that will need to take their property out of current use. Motor vehicle permits, we increased that a little bit because we're seeing that steadily increase, which is often an indication of the economy improving, and that's from me, my own experience. We had a very big increase in an insurance rebate that is probably, that we've received, we're receiving a large insurance rebate this year from the health trust as a result of the lawsuit that happened, and we're receiving an even larger one in this upcoming year in approximately $350,000. And I just want to point that out to you, that that is a one-time revenue, and that $350,000 will go away next year. Decreases, we saw decreases in administration for other funds. I don't, I don't want to bore you to tears, but what it is, is we charge the other funds for Paul's time and for Rick Seymour's time and for various things, for doing the payroll and all those kinds of things. So, to keep everything straight and everybody paying their fair share of everything. Decreases in motor vehicle, road infrastructure. What is that? Oh, go ahead.
That is that special RSA that we voted on for the $5 charge per registration. Even though we see motor vehicle permits going up, the number of vehicles that are being registered have been basically constant. So, that's a little decrease, to more, to more reflect the actual numbers of what we're receiving for a number of registrations.
It's $5, is it?
Yes, $5.
So, we went through the, the revenues and the expenditures. The, I don't know if it's important for me to say it again, but I think I will. The proposed, the increase on the tax rate, it, at this point, the town council's budget is eight cents, which is a 1.1, 1.4% increase from last year. The deliberative session is on Wednesday, March 11th, 2015, as Nancy has announced, and annual voting day is Tuesday, April 14th, from 7:00 to 7:00 at the James Mastacola Upper Elementary School on 26 Obuzik Lake Road. 2015.
Oh, yeah. All done? Okay, with that, I will open the public hearing at 8:02. And we'd be happy to start taking, what, is your question? At this point, we can start hearing testimony or public comment, if you'd like to come up and start making, right?
Yes.
Yeah. Regarding the budget, please feel free, just come up and just identify yourself so everybody knows. We know, but everybody else.
Jennifer Jobin, I am the chair of the library board of trustees. You have a small packet, there are a few pages that I gave to you. The library board of trustees would like to restate the request that you consider adding funds to the library budget for a 73 cent raise for our part-time employees. As previously stated, the 73 cents is an effort to achieve wage parity with other part-time non-union employees. The last raise for the part-time library employees was in 2010. The 73 cents comes from 2012 wage increases for non-union town employees. The full-time employees, including library employees, received a $1,500 in- The full-time employees, including library employees, received a fifteen hundred dollar, um, increase. At that time, part-time, uh, non-union town employees received a seventy-three cent increase. That was not reflected in the library budget for part-time employees. I did provide to you, um, once again, the spreadsheet that, um, Yvette had put together with, um, information on, um, our current wages for, uh, part-time employees, uh, what it would be with the seventy-three cent increase. And then also comparison to, uh, similar positions at other libraries, um, in the area within our, um, within our region. I did make a note on that page for you, uh, the last time, uh, when we presented our budget, you'd had questions about one of the, um, aides in the circulation department. Her, uh, rate was seventeen thirty-nine. We had provided you with information that that was part of a retirement fund, um, issue at the time. She's been, uh, with the library for several years, since nineteen ninety-six, was part of her retirement plan. The, the town changed the retirement plan, um, not to include part-time employees. So as part of an agreement, uh, this employee's rate was added, um, seventy-two cents was added to that person's, um, rate at that time. So that's why, um, they're kind of out of the range. And I've also included for you, um, an updated spreadsheet which shows you, uh, our budget with that seventy-three cents added in. Do you have any questions?
I don't, anyone? No, thank you very much, appreciate it. And thank you for sending this information beforehand, too. Okay, anyone else want to provide testimony at this time? Yes.
I came to a meeting here a couple of weeks ago and you weren't here. And things are different when you're not here. Your ever-present smile leaves a great atmosphere in these meetings. And you're smiling when there's nothing to smile about. You're smiling when I don't have anything to smile about. And you're still smiling, so it's nice to see you back.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
I was told that if I speak up for the skate park, first of all, I've tried.
Just, just identify yourself for the, for the minutes.
Junie Pierce.
Thank you.
Um, I've tried to organize my thoughts and if they're scattered, I've tried to rewrite things, but, um, I'll do my best. I was told that if I, by multiple people, that if I speak up for the skate park, it will look like I want the town to continue to fund a job for me. I never intended to do this job forever. I have given up seven months for the, seven summers for the skate park and have received enough compliments to last me a lifetime. So I will try to speak as a resident who has worked with kids for sixty years. Nowadays, many kids feel like they don't belong and that they don't fit in. They don't fit into society, um, they don't fit into school, and they just don't belong. And if you have any doubts as to what happens when people go up feeling that they don't belong anywhere, you just have to look at the news. Couple of weeks ago, a comment was made that Meredith is the only one that has an attendant and only on weekends. And I was very confused by this because I have a letter from Park Rec that states something very different, that there are other attendants. But, um, um, I don't understand the conflicting comments. To my knowledge, no one, um, on the town council has spent quality time at the skate park. By meaning that, out, a few hours, talking to the kids, talking to the attendant, talking to the parents, to see what really goes on there. Now, I could be wrong, I've put in thirty-five hundred hours at the skate park. And no one from town has ever come to talk to me. So it seems to me that a decision is made about the skate park, um, only on perhaps what one person says. And, and, uh, there is nobody employed by the town right now that has ever spent quality time at the skate park. So I'm wondering if this is really fair. The reputation of our skate park is incredible. And this isn't my opinion of it, it comes from other people. I've been told that we have the best skate park in the state. And I've also been told from Massachusetts people that we have, um, best skate park within a hundred mile radius of Boston. If the skate park is vandalized, it won't be vandalized, um, by all the kids who go there. If it's vandalized, it will be vandalized for a small, by a small group of people. And is it really fair to punish everyone for what other, others do? There have been, not during my seven years, but before, there has been, there have been drug problems. Is it fair to punish everybody because of what some people do? And, um, Wyntom and Hudson have closed their skate park for these reasons, lack of respect, drugs, vandalism, and trash. Now, our skate park is a place where our kids feel safe. And they feel that there's somebody there who cares. And where can they go if they don't have a place to feel safe in the summer? If they don't have a place to go? Uh, in the last three years, we have gotten huge numbers of smaller kids. I call them the next generation, but there's a generation in front of them and then there's the older generation. And, um, they don't come because, um, they have nothing better to do, they heard that it's really fun and it's supervised. They develop skills of courage, confidence, never give up. Who will make these kids feel safe if you leave it open? Is it gonna be a free-for-all, like it was, um, in the late, uh, nineties and early two thousand? You know, who's going to make them feel safe? Who's gonna make everybody feel safe? And, um, and not so long ago, and I forget, it was either Keene or Goffstown, the Park Rec Director came to talk to me about why our skate park is so popular. And they had put cameras up, which were torn down and destroyed, um, by kids. And it's either Keene or Goffstown, but I don't remember. If, if there's no supervision, I can guarantee you, um, there will be spitting, swearing, van, vandalizing, smoking, drugs, drinking, et cetera. My first two years were nightmare at the Merrimack Skate Park. It was just really hard and very, very stressful. The third year was slightly better, fourth year was a little bit better. And now people understand the rules and the last three years have been good. And it's a sad story to think that all of this may just disappear with no supervision. Kids are kids and whatever. You're also talking about, about less than two percent of the budget. Two percent of the budget for kids who don't feel like they belong. We all know that there are dysfunctional families in every town in this country. And when kids can't turn to their family, when they can't, uh, school is out, when they, they feel like they don't belong, our skate park is one place where people go. And that they have somebody to talk to. I can't speak what the other, about what the other, um, attendants do. But I do know that the kids like them and that's good enough for me. And I do know that they interact. As far as me, when I'm there, I have to know the name of every single person in there. I have to know, uh, whose backpack belongs to who. I have to know, uh, we have probably the most incredible skate park because everybody comes in and leaves their backpacks, wallets, um, phones, car keys, iPods, all over the place. Nobody has to watch their stuff because nobody will touch it. In my seven years, we had one theft. And I knew who did it. And I contacted the boy and said, "You have twenty-four hours to put those sunglasses in my mailbox. And if you don't, I'm going to the police." And they were in my mailbox. I didn't have to call the police once last year, if I remember correctly, of course, I may not. But, um, I just don't think for such a small amount of money, um, uh, kids who need this place should be penalized. Last year, my guess is that we had a hundred and fifty to a hundred and eighty different people show up at the skate park. That's my guess. I'm not positive, it could be more. Just because Meredith is the only skate park that has an attendant on weekends, does that really mean that we need to lower our values and our reputation because of what some other skate park does? And, um, I don't think, uh, we should do that. Brief history of the skate park, for those who don't know about it, it was built sometime in the late nineties. It was all wood. It was, uh, destroyed. And the town got sixty thousand dollars and built what we have now. And, um, they didn't replace everything, there was a half pipe in there and there was another quarter pipe, but not everything was replaced, but what's there now was replaced. And I don't know what year, maybe two thousand and four. And there has not been vandalism there, uh, since, in the last seven years. There has not been graffiti. And I just think, um, it, it's not fair to, um, you know, penalize people for, um, what others do, especially kids who need a place to go, especially in the summer. As far as, as far as the holidays are concerned, they are jam-packed. I've worked most of the holidays and they are packed. The only holiday where it wasn't, I wasn't around and the, the attendant who signed up canceled out at literally the last minute or last few days. And Sherri had to struggle to find somebody to fill in and could only find somebody to go in late in the afternoon. But my experience on the Fourth of July is when the skate park is open, what do you call that gathering you have on the high school grounds? You know, that rotary sponsors?
The midway.
Midway. We, we get huge number of kids when midway is going on, huge. Because people come from everywhere and they all stop in. So, um, I don't think one holiday should, because the regular attendant didn't show up, should, um, uh, make any difference. So, um, when this, the skate park was put in, they got an attendant, um, there were problems, but there were not other problems. And, um, it's gotten better every year. And to leave it just totally open, a free-for-all, it's gonna change everything. And lastly, I'll say that in the spring, I talked to two of the kids, I, who I said that, you know, there doesn't seem to be much support for an attendant. And I asked them, uh, what they think about not having an attendant here anymore after two thousand and fourteen. And one boy said, Cory said, that it'll go back to the way it used to be. And then the other guy said, "Well, it would go back to the way it used to be and I'd be able to relive some of the fun times I had." And I said, "Like what?" "Oh, you don't want to know, tell me one thing." And he said, "Well, it used to be great fun to bring in two tarps and tie one tar, tarp from the end of the far ramp to the fence." And then they brought in another top to put on top of it going the other way, so they were doors going down. They brought in a TV and hooked it up to the electrical outlet behind the skate park. They bought, brought in pot and, um, alcohol and smoked and watched TV and did what they want underneath their tent. And this was sometime between, he said he thought it was two thousand and seven or two thousand and six. And, um, I'm not totally confident that this type of thing won't happen again. So, um, does anybody have any questions? Have I gone over my time? Is there time?
For questions, there are, sure. Any questions from any of the council? Well, thank you for your testimony, thank you very much.
Yep, please.
Please just state who you are for the record.
Yeah, Leah St. Lawrence, thirty-two Curry Road. And I'm also gonna speak about the reduction in the attendance position at the skate park. I am all for the park being opening longer and I totally agree with your example, Councilor Dwyer, about the child who wants to go to the park at, at seven AM on a Saturday morning and not being able to get in because the park is closed. But, um, to have it open to the public and unsupervised for that entire time, that child, I don't think will be safe during that timeframe. And, um, although the police can oversee it and everything, I still, I think that there, there are gonna be a lot of gaps in the timeframe where it can be monitored. The attendants there do a wonderful job. I've asked people, um, in, in town, how they would feel if it was open to the, open to the public and unsupervised. And their quotes were, it was, it's gonna end up just like Wasserman Park did and look what happened there. Or it's gonna end up how, um, the park was when it first opened. My also concern, um, is where it's located. It's located right directly across from our elementary schools. With, in those fields, there are playground fields right there, too. You're opening up the public, um, maybe on weekends if the gates are open from seven to seven. But what happens when school is in session? That's right next door to the elementary schools. If you have people that could be coming in from Nashua, over the border from Massachusetts, is that really a good atmosphere for our kids in the school district? I'm not sure. But while there is an attendant there and during the school week, the attendants are there from, I think, I believe it's open from three o'clock till dusk. And, um, it's perfect, the kids get out of school, all the bus traffic has been gone, um, it's all supervised. The kids who aren't in organized sports, they can ride their bicycles over there. And I think it is important for the kids who aren't in organized sports, they take, they take, um, advantage of this situation where it's a place they can go in a controlled environment. There's, we call them, you know, uh, or we say it's unsupervised, but I think that's a strong word. I think more, um, it's more of a safety purpose that that attendant is there, um, kind of like a guard, perhaps maybe like a lifeguard would be at, you know, Wasserman Park on the beach or at a pool. I think it's important to, to know that, that it's there for the safety of the smaller kids and the older kids that might be influenced by other outside, um, influences while they're there, unsupervised or just without somebody looking over their shoulder to see what's going on. So, that's all.
Any questions? No? Thank you very much. Are you traveling over to?
Yeah.
Okay, that's, no, that's fine. Just wanna make sure to wait for you.
Hi, my name is Mark Tyers. Uh, I'm part-time also as a attendant at the skate park. And I'd have to agree with Junie on just the, as far as the supervision of the kids. I'm only speaking for myself when I say it's, I feel it would be a safety concern if you didn't have somebody there. And, I don't know, the two of them really said everything else, um, that I was gonna say. So I'm just speaking on behalf of just the safety, the overall safety of the children in this town that we, if we don't have an attendant, come up with some al, kind of alternative plan because really, you would hate for something to happen to one of the kids there. And again, going back to the vandalism, something having to be vandalized and that's not something you want to have to replace, basically. So, um, yeah, I'm just, just an overall concern of mine. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. It has to be recorded. For the record. For the record.
As far as infrastructure for the skate park, there's one problem. The pyramid. The left side of the pyramid, if, on any part of the skate park, if the stride right isn't exactly close together, water seeps in and rots the wood. And this is what's happened to the left side of the pyramid. And I talked to some skate park experts in South Nashua. And all that needs to be done is the stride right needs to be taken off carefully so you can reuse it. Replace the wood frame where it's rotted, and then put the stride right back on. And I was told that the cost of this for one half of the pyramid is minimal. And for those of you who don't know what the pyramid is, there are three structures at the skate park besides the wooden house, let's say. And it's the middle one where the wood is rotting.
Thank you for the information. Okay, is there anyone else who would like to provide testimony regarding the budget? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing at 8:26. Okay, open up to town council discussion. Yes, Finley.
I just have two things right on the surface here. One of them is, sorry about that, Merrill's Marauders Bridge, the footbridge we have there. I totally spaced it during this whole process, and I didn't know. It, it appears to need a little rehab. And I don't know that it's anything major structurally or, or anything, but I don't know. It might be something at deliberative session, and I, if I can get some information on that as to what that might be. There's, I know there's two-by-six rails that go across that some of those are missing. And I just, possibly should be looked at.
Oh, to come up, absolutely, Rick.
Yeah, the question was already asked of him.
Okay, and he's gonna respond.
Rick Seymour, Public Works Director. Adam looked at the bridge maybe about two weeks ago. A lot of the, what looks rusty is basically just oxidation. It's natural oxidation. And I think he had ordered a couple pieces of wood boards to replace the, the missing members, so. It's not, nothing, nothing substantial.
Excellent. I appreciate that. Thank you. The other thing I have, I'd like to talk about a little bit is the flyover for the GIS system, for that overlay. We had chatted about it at one point to a small degree, but could you remind me of the cost of that? And then what we use it for?
I will let Tim Thompson-
He read your mind.
He already knew you were gonna come.
Thank you. For the record, Tim Thompson, Community Development Director. The estimate I have right now from our current GIS consultant is that for the aerial photography and the ortho photo development, be somewhere around $75,000 to $100,000 for a community the size of Merrimack. That right now is not proposed to take place now. It's once we establish and fully fund the GIS capital reserves. We're probably another year or two out before we start doing that work.
Okay, and that's good, gives us plenty of time, but I was, if you might, in an easy way-
Sure, what the, what the information is used for. The aerial photography is converted into what's called digital ortho photography, which is images that are tied to specific points on the earth's surface so that you can use GPS coordinates, and it's tied specifically to the geography of the earth. From those photos, you can then update all the data layers that we have in our GIS. The building envelopes, the parking lot, edges, roads, topography, water, wetlands, all of those types of things that you can get from the aerial photography, given the resolution that these photos are taken at, would then be used to update all the data layers that we have within the GIS itself. Because right now, we're utilizing photography from 2005, so we're already 10 years of age in our current system for the information we have available.
Okay.
So would the preciseness be that much more accurate? Is that reasonable?
When you do digital ortho photography, yes, there, it's very specific. I think you, the resolution that typically a municipal GIS is at is that a pixel is roughly about a meter on the ground.
So would that be useful in the planning department?
Oh, absolutely.
In terms of boundaries, all those things?
It's department-wide. It's, it's not just my department. It's the fire department. It's the police department. It's Public Works. All of the different departments that can utilize geospatial data. This type of information is invaluable for the community.
Which is, okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else, Finley?
No.
Okay, any other discussions, suggestions? Okay, any further action on the budget? None? Okay, yes.
I did wanna speak, I've talked, have Eileen's comments on the library proposal. It seemed, in my mind, that that might be something that would be, we would be supportive of. And I didn't, I didn't know-
You'd like Eileen to address?
If she might.
I agree with the concept because, as Jennifer expressed, although we only have a few part-time people that were in the town that received the 73 cents an hour, and 73 cents relates to the $1,500 that each of the employees got for changing their health insurance drastically, in my mind. So I, from, from a concept perspective, I think that it makes sense. So I was supportive of it from that perspective. It's kind of unfair to ask me this question, but I'll answer it anyway. But, no, I'll, I'll finish, I'll finish.
It is something I should've asked you before.
But what I would say is, you would need to take a look at what the, what other communities are paying for similar positions. And even though the 73 cents made sense to me from a equitability across the town perspective, if you take a look at the positions and what our ranges are compared to similar ranges, we would then, it would skew our rates beyond where many of the communities are at. So the long story is, I support the, I support the idea of it, but I don't support it on paper. When, when you look at the rates compared to other communities, it doesn't compute.
Thank you. I'm sorry about that.
Okay, does that answer your question, Finley?
Yeah.
Okay, yes, Dan?
Yeah, I feel like I, to respect to the library personnel, I, I feel like whether my opinions are, go against, against you or for you, I feel like you deserve a response from some of us to, that we've recognized your concern. So I, I'm just gonna share my comments. When you have the, the packet that you gave, and the, and the hourly wages are listed, and they, you know, ranging from $14 to $17 an hour, $16 an hour, I guess my, my gut comment says, I think that just is a really good wage for the work that's being done there. It's, it's a very nice environment. It's very peaceful. It's a library. It's clean. It's warm in the winter. It's cool in the summer. No one's digging a ditch, you know, just to make a metaphor. I would've been more apt to, I feel like there, there's no negotiation. There's, I would like to have maybe, maybe a 50 cent raise or some other type of topic could've been discussed that, that we might've had a better discussion. But with the presentation just being kind of down to crunch time, I felt like at, for tonight, my only option was the 73 cents. But I go back to the nature of the job and the positions that are there, and I, I feel like it's, like, again, it's a good job, and I think they're being paid well. Am I open for them to having an increase considering the changing of the, of the healthcare issue? I, I would agree with Eileen, and in concept, I, I'm for it. It just maybe it's the 73 cents I was having a harder time wrapping my head around. So if there was, if there was a way out to come up with another number from the, my fellow counselors, I would be open to bring it up for discussion. And I don't mean to put anybody on the spot either, so.
Okay. No further discussion? Yes, Tom?
Not sure I really wanna dig into this, but you point out in your paperwork that the last raise was in 2010. I was wondering if the town employees received raises at that same time? In the year 2010? When there was a 1.5% COLA increase for the library employees?
I don't think Eileen was employed at that particular time.
No, but Paul? Paul, do you know, or, I mean, my understanding is no. So I, I just wanna try and bring some information to the table. Do you remember, Tom, or?
No. No, I don't.
You don't remember?
No, I don't. I don't remember.
Okay, it, it's not critical, but my understanding was that they didn't, that the, the library employees got a raise at one point, that the rest of the town didn't. If you wanted to, that'd be great.
He just happens to have all those with him. That's called, that's called competency. I was gonna say, I could. We can do a quick reset. We can do a quick recess if you need it, Paul. They did not.
So I, my, my only point there is that, you know, if the library did get a raise in 2010 and, and the employees didn't, and when they got one in 2012, maybe that was compensation for the fact that the library got one in 2010. So to try and stand here in 2015 and suggest that we're out of balance because of raises here and there, I think we really need to understand a lot more data than what's presented here on this thing. And so I'm not prepared to make any representation to, to go forward with your, your request. But I certainly appreciate your putting this amount of information together and, and making the presentation available to us. But I, I think I'm ready to stand with where we are at the moment.
I was just passed a note. Excuse me. Okay, we already have the, when the budget is. Okay, yes. Gotcha. Excuse me. Okay, just wanna verify something. So at the present time, if there are no changes, the budget would be $31,472,126?
That is correct.
Okay. So I need a motion to move to the warrant. The budget as just stated, this amount.
So moved. Seconded.
Okay. So it's moved by Tom Mahon, seconded by Bill Boyd. Any further discussion?
What are we doing there?
I'm sorry. Well, go ahead.
I was just curious about timing. I thought we had, we had a later discussion about the overall budget, the overall warrant. And we were doing things like that then, but-
Well, later on, we do have to talk about the articles. Is that what you mean?
Yeah, and isn't this one of the articles?
Yes, and that is talked about separately as well. Am I understanding it correctly? Under Section 4, that's when we talk about, we do the recommendations, and that's the amount that I quoted.
And what, what was your motion just now? I'm sorry.
To move it to the warrant. To move that amount to the warrant. Please correct me if I'm doing it wrong.
Nope. I just don't understand, but that's fine.
Okay. Okay, all those in favor of moving the budget as quoted to the warrant, please vote. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. 7-0-0. Okay, let's move on to the collective bargaining agreement. Eileen and Paul?
Yes, we do.
Oh, you wanna take a little minute's break? Let's do a little TC break here. Five minutes? Okay, thank you. Okay, let's reconvene. And we are about to hear information regarding the collective bargaining agreement from Eileen and Paul. I'm sorry? You went into the presentation, then I would open it.
Okay. Could somebody turn down the lights, please? As you know, the town has six unions. In 2000, for the first, first year of the contract, three years ago, for the year ended June 30, 2013, all of the, five of the unions settled for a contra, a three-year contract. That contract, the only one that didn't settle their contract was this union, the APSME 93 Local 296, 2986. Just to add a little bit of flavor to this one, I had just started working here, and we came up with a plan for negotiation, negotiations terms. You know, what are we gonna do for wages? What are we gonna do for health insurance? And I went in and met with this group, and within 15 minutes, we had signed a tentative agreement. And I thought, wow, my goodness. And the, the union represented, the, the, the union body voted it down almost unanimously, and they done-
Put you in your place, didn't they?
Exactly, did. And we have negotiated faithfully for over three years, almost four years, on this contract. What this contract represents is a one-year agreement. The reason why it's a one-year agreement is because, as we've discussed on many different occasions, we have the Cadillac tax issue coming to haunt us in 2018, and we need to make provisions for that as it relates to all the unions. So I wanted to get them glutton for punishment to negotiate them all in one year. So, so anyway, this agreement is, it ends to consult, to, to end at the same time all the other five unions' contracts ends, and that's why it's a one-year agreement. The last time that this union had a contract or had a settled contract was June 30, 2010. So this is a mirror, basically, of what everyone else, every other union agreed to, which was, and was referred to before, $1,500 a year added to their base pay, which, which is 73 cents an hour. They, this union will change their health insurance a great deal. They, this union will change their health insurance a great deal. They had the most luxurious plan that the town offered, or really that anyone offered in this, offers any municipality in the state, and they were paying very little on their, on their, the, the contribution toward the premium. And to give you an example of that, we had employees who had a plan in the neighborhood of twenty-seven thousand dollar plan, and they were only paying, the, the contract said that they would pay two percent of their base, no more than two percent of their base wage toward health insurance. So conceivably, a person could be paying five hundred dollars a year for a twenty-seven thousand dollar plan, somewhere around there. And now this, this individual would need to pay twenty-seven hundred dollars for a lesser plan that has higher deductibles, albeit still generous, and, and higher prescriptions, costs, co-pays, which it has been shown that the prescriptions are the ones that are, are the growing part of, of everyone's health insurance bill, starts to get into the prescriptions. So the prescriptions for this contract, that, that, the contract ended on June thirty, two thousand and ten, but certain provisions of it continue on, which are, include the health insurance. And so throughout this time, they had a health insurance plan where they were paying a dollar for any prescription, for three-month supply. So it didn't matter what it was or what it costs. And if, what, what we all discuss in, when devising or considering negotiation parameters, that if people don't have any skin in the game, or have any knowledge of what these costs are by having to share in them, then the, the overall cost will never go down. So the, I'm very pleased with this contract finally coming, coming in and being approved by the membership. It, it consists of the, of three things, the seventy-three cent an hour, or fifteen hundred dollar a year, or fifteen hundred dollar a year raise, and changing, changing significantly in the health insurance, changing in the percentage of the, of the health insurance premium. So it's now, it's not tied to a person's wages, but it's tied to ten percent of the premium cost, whatever that may be. And ten percent of the dental, dental, which is a smaller one. The, the last thing is that we added a twenty-year step at one-point-five percent of the base pay that currently involves four individuals for a total cost of three thousand some-odd dollars. So the, the numbers are very shocking because this contract has languished for so many years. The wages, that's the fifteen hundred dollars that we're talking about, plus the associated FICA and workers' comp and all those kinds of things that are related to wages, come to seventy-two thousand, eight-hundred-and-thirty-four dollars. The steps, which are the, the, the increases that individuals get as they progress in, in terms of time with the, with the, the town, you, you get a step one, at year one, at year three, at year five, and they vary in, in percentages in around three percent generally. So they total ninety-seven thousand dollars, ninety-seven thousand dollars. The twenty-year step that I referred to was for those four people, and that comes to a total of, with, with associated costs, three thousand, two-hundred-and-six dollars. And you can see the, the large amount of savings that we see from them changing their health insurance and also contributing more. So all of those, of a hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars. So the net cost to the town is thirty-five thousand dollars, and that represents of just about a penny on the tax rate.
Okay, thank you. I'd like to open the public hearing at eight fifty-six. Any testimony here? No more running up here? Okay, so let's say they're closing the public hearing at eight fifty-seven. And I will open it up for discussion. Yes, Bill?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Eileen, can you talk a little bit about what this contract does in terms of setting us up strategically down the road for, for future negotiations, budget planning, that kind of thing?
It's very important because it's the last contract. We have very little, as, as you know, when you have union contracts, if the contract expires, the existing health insurance remains, even though the contract expires, as long as, even, as long as it's open. It goes up, it doesn't matter. You still have to pay what, what it costs. In, in municipalities in the state of New Hampshire, we don't have a lot of options to go out to bid for health insurance because there aren't that many pools that have these kinds of health insurance plans that are kind of embedded in the health, in the, the, the union contracts. So this, having all the unions under the same health insurance plan now makes it, makes it possible for us to go out to bid with at least one other carrier. So obviously, competition is always good. So it, it makes a big difference because there's forty employees in this group, and the health insurance carrier that we have right now requires that we have at least seventy-five percent of the, the mem, the eligible, the people eligible for health insurance on the plan. So we couldn't leave this group with them and go to another group because the other group doesn't offer that rich of a benefit. That's a little bit wordy, but.
All set?
Yep.
Any other questions or areas of discussion? Okay, I would like, I need a motion to move the collective agreement to the warrant.
So moved.
Seconded.
Made by Tom Mahan, seconded by Bill Boyd. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Seven, zero, zero.
Quick comment, Madam Chair?
Yes.
Eileen, thank you. Lot of work. Take a victory lap.
For the union as well.
Absolutely. I want to thank them as well.
It took a lot, it took a lot of work. It took a lot of compromise on their part, and I am very grateful for them for signing their contract.
Okay.
Excellent. Thank you. You guys can get off the hot seat. For now. And next on the agenda, and I want to be able to pronounce your last name correctly.
It's easy.
Poli? Is it Poli? Okay. It's the simple, yes.
Just because you've listed under public hearing six different things, and you didn't mention the others.
Thank you very much for mentioning that. The proposed issuance of debt, there is none. The petition bonds, there are none. Any other petition articles, there are none, I believe. And review of default budget is coming up. Under new business. Thank you, Tom, for mentioning that.
Thank you.
Okay. I'm not going to read the whole thing, but the two thousand and fifteen milfoil grant funds for Horseshoe Pond is going to be submitted by Assistant Planner Donna Poli, and this relates to expending some capital reserve fund.
Point of order?
Yes.
Legislative updates, Town Manager's Report, Consent Agenda? Did we blow through those?
We did blow through them inadvertently.
Okay.
Hold that thought. See what happens when I've had some time off? I don't know what I'm doing. Yes, I do. When he's right, I do.
Oof.
Legislative updates from state reps?
Uh-oh.
Wow.
State reps?
You'll never live that one down.
Town Manager's Report. Eileen, I'm sorry.
If you are interested, I will give you. If you are interested, I will give you an update, or if it's too late, I won't, but if you're interested, Paul can give you an update on where we are with the snow budget and overtime.
Do we want to know?
Anybody interested?
Sure.
Yes, I think so.
Okay.
It's one of those necessary needs to know.
This feels run out of salt and can't get any, so I'm dying to hear what we've got.
Right now, before the storm that happened on Monday.
Before the storm?
Before the storm. This is all as of last Friday. We had about thirty-three percent of our overtime budget remaining. We also had about thirty percent of our vehicle maintenance budget as it related to snow equipment remaining. We have seven weeks left of a seventeen winter season. Winter season runs probably from December first to April first, or forty-one percent of the winter remaining. It's a...
No wonder they arrested him. They're trying.
The, the salt shed is currently about, be fifty percent, was about fifty percent filled. We have some POs and, and money set up with the company to get the salt in. I know that some of the towns around us have, have run out of salt. And when that happens, sometimes they come knocking on our door to see if we would be willing to give them a truck or two.
I like that. It's line of demand.
I was going to say, what price?
And the only, and the only time we will do that is when we know we are going to get a delivery shortly. We always take our community needs first. But if we know we're getting a delivery within the next week or so, we'd be a good community person and, and help other communities.
Help us know budget.
Just like the local gas stations do.
And, and this kind of goes along with... Arresting the little groundhog, the last note that I actually asked Adam this question on Friday. If we end up getting a twenty-four-inch storm on Sunday, the overtime budget will be around ninety percent expended. That was his projections. And roughly about twenty-seven thousand dollars left in total overtime between the supervisors and things of that sort. We didn't get a twenty-four-inch storm, but we definitely got the three-day storm, so we're running roughly about ten percent left in our overtime budget. And with another one projected for Saturday, Sunday, and another one projected for next Wednesday.
Rain, saying rain.
Rain now?
Yeah.
That's going to be even worse.
I'm not sure what's worse.
I don't think so. Rain right now is bad.
Yeah. Rain, yeah, it would be worse for us, but it looks like our overtime budget will probably be used up by at least...
Next week.
Next week on this. And there have been some vacancies in the Highway Department and in the Equipment Maintenance Department, so we'll use some of those savings in, in salaries and health insurance and other benefits to help offset some of the overtime costs like we did last year. And at the end of the year, we'll come up and, and figure out where we stand, and if we need to, we will look at the whole budget.
We're, we're basically doing fine now, in, on the budget overall, and we're not panicking at this point.
Panicking doesn't do any good, anyway. Anything else, Eileen? That's it? Okay, there's nothing on the consent agenda? Your business was obviously, obviously already dealt with. Now? Are we ready now, Bill?
You're the chairman.
Oh, yeah. On occasion. Two thousand and fifteen milfoil grant funds for Horseshoe Pond, again submitted by Assistant Planner Donna Poli, and this has to do with expending some capital revert, uh, reserve funds for treatments. So go right ahead.
Thank you. For the record, Donna Poli Assistant Planner, is it okay, Madam Chair, to talk about both Natta Cook and Horseshoe Pond?
Uh, that's fine with me.
Okay.
Let's see now. The Natta Cook is the next item, and is it similar? It's just different funds, right?
Correct.
Or the amounts?
Right, different amounts.
Does the council have any problem with both being presented at the same time?
No objection.
Go for it.
Okay, great. So as the council is aware, as the council is aware, we've been to you before in the past when we receive these DES grants for milfoil. This year is finally the year, we've been saying it for the last few, that we aren't proposing any herbicide treatment. We're only doing dash, diver-assistant suction harvesting. So it's good news. So we have essentially less money we're asking for. This year for Horseshoe Pond, actually for both, there's a twenty-five percent match from DES that's lower this year than in past years. Basically, all over New Hampshire, water bodies are also in the same boat, and so the funding has just been spread, yes. So this year for Horseshoe Pond, we're requesting a total of seven thousand, nine-hundred-and-forty dollars, of which one thousand, seventy-five dollars would be the DES grant, and that means six thousand, eight-hundred-and-sixty-five would be coming from the town. And that's for ten days of diving, essentially. For Natta Cook, it would be a total of ten thousand, six-hundred-and-forty-nine dollars and fifty cents. Two thousand, four-hundred-and-twelve dollars and fifty cents would be the grant, and then the town's portion would be eight thousand, two-hundred-and-thirty-seven dollars. So if you combine them for both of them, it would be a total of eighteen thousand, five-hundred-and-eighty-nine dollars and fifty cents, and then the grant would cover three thousand, four-hundred-and-eighty-seven dollars and fifty cents, and the town would only be covering fifteen thousand, one-hundred-and-two dollars. So I'm happy to answer any questions.
Just, when we take a vote, we do have to do votes separately, so. But go ahead, discussion at either one of those? Anyone have questions? Yes, Bill?
Thank you. Donna, how do you think our vendors been doing?
Last year, we had AB Aquatics for the dash, and they are coming back for Natta Cook this year. For Horseshoe Pond, we have Aqualogic, and we've worked with them in the past, and I've heard great feedback from both. Our residents on both bodies of water have been very diligent in spending their free time marking where the milfoil is so that when divers come, they're even more efficient with their time, they're able to already see where they need to be focusing. So they're, they've been working very well from what I've seen.
That's great.
Sounds like there's some good partnership going on with the town. Obviously, the association's impacted in the, in the vendors, so that's, that's good to hear.
Absolutely. And when we hear from the residents that they think it's time for a dive, they're very easy to schedule.
Good.
Thanks.
Thank you, Donna. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay, I'll, yes, Tom?
Just to clarify, you said that we're not going to do anything but the dash?
Correct.
We're not going to do any herbicides or anything?
No herbicide this year.
Anywhere?
Just dash for both.
Okay, thank you.
No problem.
Yes, Dan?
What if, what if circumstances changed, though? What if there was a report and it was, there was a major reinfestation? Is there a way to, to react?
Right now, it's budgeted for extra diving. So last year, we were in a similar situation, and they actually only, in Natta Cook, went out four days from, I think it was July twelfth to October tenth. And then Horseshoe Pond had two days of diving and one day of herbicide. The two diving days were in July, and the herbicide treatment was in June. So the rest of the season looked good. So we've already kind of built in that contingency.
Any other questions? Okay, I'll intitiate a motion for number one, which is the Horseshoe Pond.
Madam Chair, I move that the Town Council accept and authorize the expenditure after one thousand, seventy-five dollars of the grant from the New Hampshire Department of Environmental Services for Milfoil Control via Diver-Assisted Suction Harvesting, parentheses, dash, in addition to the town's mashing share of six thousand, eight-hundred-and-sixty-five dollars this fiscal year for dash, for variable milfoil control efforts and portions of Horseshoe Pond. The total request is seven thousand, nine-hundred-and-forty, forty dollars. Furthermore, we ask that the town should be expended for the milfoil capital reserve fund. This request represents funding to allow for treatment in two thousand and fifteen to control milfoil pursuant to charter article eight hyphen fifteen in RSA thirty-one con...
and RSA thirty-one colon ninety-five hyphen B, and furthermore, that the town manager, under her proxy, be authorized to sign any and all documents necessary to perfect the, the application.
Second.
Second by Lon Woods. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any against? Nothing? Okay, seven zero zero. Okay, I maintain a motion for the Natta Cook Lake.
Madam Chair, I would move that the town council accept and authorize the expenditure of up, of up to two thousand four hundred and twelve dollars and fifty cents of the grant from the New England, New England, New Hampshire Department of Environmental Services for milfoil control via diver assisted suction harvesting, parentheses dash, in addition to the town's matching share of eight thousand two hundred and thirty-seven dollars this fiscal year for dash for variable milfoil control efforts and portions of Natta Cook Lake. This totals ten thousand six hundred and forty-nine dollars and fifty cents. I ask that the town should be expended from the milfoil capital reserve fund. This request represents funding to allow for treatment in two thousand fifteen to control milfoil pursuant to charter article eight hyphen fifteen and RSA thirty-one colon ninety-five hyphen B, and furthermore, that the town manager, under her proxy, be authorized to sign any and all documents necessary to perfect the application. Period.
Second.
Second by Dan Dwyer. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
No, nothing, no, so, okay, seven zero zero. Perfect. Thank you very much. Well done.
Thank you, Donna. Have a good weekend. Have a good weekend, Tom.
Carefully reviewing the agenda. Review, we're back in the seats now, Paul and Eileen. Review of the two thousand fifteen sixteen default budget. Review the default budget. Go right ahead, anytime you're ready.
Okay, um, the default calculations. Paul has done these for me. This is my third time doing a town budget for the past twenty-three years. Prior to that, I always worked on city budgets, so I may ask, need to ask Paul to help me with this since it's only brought up once a year. The way that default calculations are done, there's a law that, or rules that determine how a default calculation is calculated, and that is, you start with the prior year budget. You see that under the fourteen, two thousand fourteen fifteen voted budget, thirty-one million nine hundred and seventy-nine thousand two hundred and fifty-seven dollars. That was what was voted for that year. Then what you need to do is you need to, normally you would see increases based on collective bargaining units. But because we saw so much savings in our health insurance, the, this third year of the collective bargaining units agreements are actually negative. Normally, as I said, they would be positive. So you take last year's budget, meaning the two thousand fourteen fifteen, and in this case, subtract out all four, five of the union contracts that had been settled. It doesn't include this, this other one, which is another warrant article that we just referred to, AFSPY. Then, in addition to all this, the savings on each individual contract, there was also additional savings in health insurance beyond that. So, so, so what happens is, when, when a collective bargaining agreement comes before the public, it has, it has, and it's for three years, it will show three numbers. It'll say, in year one, it costs this, in year two, it costs this, in year three, it saves that. They're just estimates. So we've placed in the estimates that the people voted on, and when the health insurance came in, it actually came in lower than that. So those are the exact numbers that were on those warrant articles for each of those collective bargaining units for that year. And that's why there's an additional amount of health insurance there, because that's actual, it's not estimated. New Hampshire retirement system, the, as we know, the retirement system increased their rates, and that, for the union contracts only, is ninety-two thousand six hundred and seventy-one dollars. That needs to get added back because that's an obligation that we have. Other insurance benefits, dental, et cetera, again, they came in lower than those union contracts were estimated to be when they went before the people two years ago. Which is another decrease of thirty-one, thirty-one thousand nine hundred and seventy-four dollars. Then, as part of the default calculation, you take out the one-time capital reserve fund purchases of last year. Two thousand fourteen fifteen. Then debt service, it's an obligation that you pay, so you take out last year's debt service payment, and you add back this year's debt service payment, and you'll often see as, as, every year, the, the debt service goes down because interest on the, on the, the principal goes down, the interest goes, the principal stays the same, the interest goes down. So the default budget is twenty-seven million six hundred and forty-six dollars, six hundred and forty-six thousand three hundred and thirty-five dollars. The budget, last year's budget was thirty-one million nine hundred and seventy-nine thousand two hundred and fifty-seven dollars. So we take the, the default calculation and come to a tax rate. We, um, it's hard to do this, this late at night. So the, the way that default, the default revenues are calculated, I'm gonna let you do it, Paul.
Right. So because we want to get an apples-to-apples comparison on the default versus what currently the town council has, has the town council's budget, we have to back out those capital reserve funds that are in the fifteen sixteen budget. By doing that and backing out the appropriation, like we said in the presentation prior, we also have to back out the revenue. So to do, right now, we're estimating about sixteen point one, sixteen point two million dollars in revenue in the town council's budget. By backing out the almost two point nine million dollars in capital reserve funds that is in this budget for fifteen sixteen, it comes to a revenue of thirteen million two hundred and eighty thousand dollars. So you take the twenty-seven six forty-six minus the thirteen two eighty, add in the tax overlay of three twenty-five, add in the veterans' benefits, the property tax levy is about fifteen million three hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars. Divide that by the overall valuation of the town, about two point nine billion dollars. The default property tax rate would be five dollars and twenty-three cents. Compared to the proposed budget tax rate of five dollars and fifty-four cents, it's about a thirty-one cent difference. However, if you look at it and take the thirty-one million four seventy-two one twenty-six, excuse me, and subtract out those capital reserve fund purchases, the budget would have been twenty-eight million five hundred and sixty-four thousand seven hundred and ninety-two. The difference between the default of twenty-seven six forty-six and three hundred and thirty-five is nine hundred and eighteen thousand four hundred and fifty-seven dollars. That's what makes up your thirty-one cents. Taking it a step further, if we compare, if somebody's in the booth and sees the warrant article, they're gonna see twenty-seven thousand six forty-six three, three thirty-five. The council approved budget as of tonight was thirty-one four seventy-two one twenty-six. The difference is three point eight million dollars. What we really need to, the, the real difference, though, was only nine hundred and eighteen four fifty-seven. The way we get there is if you backed out the capital reserve fund purchases, both the left and the right side of the equation is two point nine million dollars, that you come up with the nine hundred and eighteen thousand four fifty-seven. There are several factors, as we discussed earlier in the earlier presentation, for that amount of money. The increase in capital reserve funds that, for three sixty-nine, the two police officers at a hundred and fifty-eight, and various other increases to the budget to come up with the nine hundred and eighteen thousand dollars difference. In an apples-to-apples comparison of the two default versus the fifteen sixteen budget.
Oh, I'm sorry, Dan.
So on, if, if, if nothing was to change, the twenty-seven million six four six is the number that would appear on the ballot?
Correct.
Okay.
That is the default number on the ballot.
Any other questions or comments, Lon?
I just want to be sure. The default budget puts out, you have in no man's land, improvements to the communication equipment.
Correct.
The self-contained breathing apparatus.
Correct.
And the other things that Donald Dwyer mentioned.
Right.
So there's, there are trade-offs which put a lot of our good work to, in not a good position.
Correct.
Thank you.
An, an important apparatus not being available. Yes, Dan?
Safety of the citizens.
I thi, I think sometimes the, in, in several years prior, the, the difference has been a lot smaller. So this could be a tough year when if the vote, voters aren't really attuned to what's being spent. It's a big difference, and you might, you might have a very big turnout on the vote, that people vote for default just because they're seeing, you're given two choices, a thirty-one million dollar budget or a twenty-seven million dollar budget. And it, there's a lot, that's a big difference, and normally it isn't that large, so.
A part of our responsibility, I believe, is during the deliberative session to help explain-
Yep.
-when you're backing out-
Right.
-the capital reserves, it's not the three million.
Right.
I mean, it's still significant.
Right.
And we'll have Paul explain that, right?
Hopefully.
Brilliantly.
Brilliantly. Okay, any other questions or comments? Okay, I'd like, need a motion to move to the warrant? The default budget?
It hasn't been officially moved by the town council to the, to the warrant. I tried to do the warrant so that you could read the warrant the way it would be presented tonight, if you move the money in.
Yes, Dan?
I'd like to make a motion that we accept the figure of twenty-seven million six hundred and forty-six thousand three hundred and thirty-five dollars.
Second.
Move to the warrant.
Move to the warrant.
And move to warrant.
Okay. Motion made by Dan Dwyer, seconded by Tom Mahan. Any further discussion or comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Tom? Yes? No? How would you like to respond?
Oh, yes, yes is my.
Seven zero zero. Okay. Review of two thousand fifteen town warrant, and this is maybe the differences. My understanding is, is that we need to deal with these articles, move, read them, move them, and then do a recommendation vote. Is that correct, Paul? I would like to move Article Two of the two thousand fifteen town warrant to read as follows. Article Two, shall the town vote to raise and appropriate as an operating budget, not including appropriations by special warrant articles and other appropriations voted separately, the amount set forth on the budget posted with the warrant or as amended by vote of the first session for the purpose set forth therein totaling thirty-one million four hundred and seventy-two one twenty-six? Should this article be defeated, the default budget shall be, and that is accurate, right? The twenty-seven million six hundred and forty-six thousand three hundred and thirty-five, which is the same as last year, with certain adjustments required by previous action of the town or by law. Or the town council may hold one special meeting in accordance with RSA forty colon thirteen, roman numeral ten or sixteen, to take up the issue of revised operating budget only. I need a motion for the town council to put recommendations on Article Two.
So moved.
Okay.
Move to recommend. Move to recommend, sorry.
Okay, move to recommend. Bill Boyd, Finley?
Oh, I'll say go through.
Second? And we need to vote, all those who would like to recommend this article, say aye.
Aye.
Seven zero zero. I would like to move Article Three for the two thousand fifteen town warrant to read as follows. Shall the town of Merrimack vote to approve the cost items included in a collective bargaining agreement reached between the Merrimack Town Council and the American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees Ninety-three, Local Twenty-nine Eighty-Six, which calls for the following increase in salaries and benefits at the current staffing levels. Fiscal year two thousand fifteen sixteen, wage increase one hundred and seventy-three thousand four hundred and fifty-one, wage and benefits costs minus one hundred and thirty-eight thousand four hundred and twenty-five. And further to raise and appropriate the sum of thirty-five thousand twenty-two dollars, such sum representing the anticipated increase in salaries and benefits over those of the appropriation to current staffing levels paid in the prior fiscal year. The passage of this article will result in employees covered by the collective bargaining unit contributing ten percent towards health and dental insurance premiums, and changing their healthcare to a twenty-dollar office visit, ten twenty forty-five pharmacy co-pay. These savings have been factored into the estimated increase slash decrease set forth above. This collective bargaining agreement covers the labors of the public works department to include highway, wastewater, water, solid waste, and equipment maintenance divisions. I need a motion for the TC to put recommendations on Article Three.
Move to recommend.
By Tom Mahan, seconded by Bill Boyd. All those in favor, yes, Tom?
I'm disturbed by the way this is listed as wage and benefit costs with a negative one hundred and thirty-eight four twenty-five, and I wonder if I could understand that. The wages didn't go down, the wages are listed, and the first column is increasing. This is, this is, I think, the benefit savings, not the wage and benefit savings. And I'm wondering if it shouldn't just say the benefit costs, the wage increases and the benefit costs. There's two different columns for clarity. So we'd remove wage and from that column.
So it would just read benefit costs rather than wage and benefit costs. Is that correct?
Could we put wages net of benefits?
Well, that's the thirty-five thousand.
Oh, I thought you were talking about that column, I'm sorry.
I'm talking about the column that says minus one thirty-eight four twenty-
Oh, I see, okay.
Four twenty-five.
Yeah, that's the health insurance savings.
Do we need to vote on that change?
It's a- It's semantical.
Okay, fine. So we're voting on the recommendations as amended by Tom. Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Seven zero zero. And we have to sign. Okay, we need to approve, with, we need to approve minutes for the following town council meetings, January twelfth, two thousand fifteen.
Madam Chair, I move the Thursday, January twelfth, two thousand fifteen town council minutes as presented.
Motion by Bill Boyd, seconded by Lon Woods. Any corrections or changes? Now, you said as presented, so that's it. Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any abstentions? Okay, so that's six zero one abstention is Finley Rockhouse. Okay, meeting on January fifteenth, two thousand fifteen.
Madam Chair, I move the Thursday, January fifteen, two thousand fifteen minutes with the following modification.
Go right ahead.
Page four, line eighteen.
Page four, line eighteen, it's not purse, but per se.
Per se, yep.
Those spell it differently. How should it be spelled?
P E R, second word, S E.
S E, per se.
Two words.
Two words, yeah.
Thank you.
Your work.
Okay, any other changes, Bill?
I'm good, unless my colleagues have anything else to add.
Okay, second, Lon Woods. Any other changes from anyone else? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any noes, any abstentions? So that's seven zero zero.
Madam Chair.
Yes, that was the fifteenth.
I abstained for no.
Okay, Dan did as well. Okay, so it's five, the vote on January fifteenth is five zero two. Abstention is Dan Dwyer and Tom? Is that correct?
Tom Keg.
Tom Keg. Okay, I'll set January nineteenth.
Madam Chair, I move the Thursday, January nineteenth, two thousand fifteen minutes with the following modification.
Go for it.
January nineteenth was a Monday.
I wouldn't have known, I was out of it.
Yeah, you were, you were incapacitated.
I was unconscious.
Hopefully down on some island somewhere.
No, no, it wasn't.
You were legally medicated.
Okay, any others, Bill?
Nope, I'm good.
Ah. Okay, motion made by Bill Boyd with a correction and second.
Yep.
Lon Woods. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, so that would be six zero one, because I'm abstaining. January twenty-second, two thousand fifteen.
Madam Chair, I move the Thursday, January twenty-second, two thousand fifteen minutes with the, with a couple of modifications, page twelve, line seventeen, and I'd ask Council Dwyer to refresh my recollection. It states here, the Council Boyd stated what he is, stated what he has wanted to present for is infrastructure in his country, region, state, if I remember correctly, that was, you were having that exchange between you and, at that time, Mr. Minor?
Page was that?
Page twelve. This country? So it should read Council Dwyer, not Council Boyd, is what I'm getting at.
In this.
So, changing Bill Boyd to Dan Dwyer?
Sure.
Okay.
His country or this country, it doesn't matter to me.
It doesn't matter.
I was merely looking for the, the fact that it was, it was Council Dwyer.
Of course.
And I, I just wanted to make sure that my recollection was correct.
Shocked, you want to take credit for it was in my words.
That's awesome, Dwyer. You do realize that plagiarism is the best form of flattery, you know that. Okay, okay. Page thirteen, line twenty, is brought to my attention by Councilor Woods. I don't believe Vice Chairman Karen is a member of the town council, I'm sure he, at some particular point, might be a member of the council, it's.
He's the vice chair of the conservation.
Conservation commission, that's correct. So it should read Vice Chairman Mahan, not Karen.
Anything else, Bill, you know, uh, Lon, did you have change?
I have one, please. Same meeting, page.
I got it. I stole it from you.
Page eighteen.
Oh, page eighteen, oh, I did not.
Nine forty-four. I was speaking, comments made by council, I guess at the end of the meeting. Stated, but, Wood stated his belief, the disservice, not the service, the disservice that becomes a group that's trying to do the right thing, whatever. I'd just like to add that D I S with a hyphen.
To disservice, yep.
Because otherwise, the.
The disservice that becomes.
I made that night.
Very good.
Thank you.
Any others? Okay, I need a second with the changes.
I'll second it.
Lon Woods. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so that's six zero one, I'm abstaining. Okay, January twenty-sixth.
Madam Chair, I move that the town council move the Thursday, January twenty-sixth, two thousand fifteen, with the following modification.
Yep, go for it.
January twenty-sixth was a Monday, not a Thursday.
You sure?
I have a calendar right here in front of me, Madam Chair.
I got you, I got you.
Cutting paste is a deadly thing.
Yeah, got you, go for it.
Otherwise, everything else looks fine.
Excellent, I have, I need a second.
Second.
Second by Tom Mahan. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, again, boy, I was up for a while, six zero one, I'm abstaining. Okay, January twenty-ninth.
Madam Chair, I move that the town council approve the Thursday, January twenty-ninth, two thousand fifteen minutes with the question to my colleagues. And I'm just, I'm, I'm okay with it, I just don't know if we need to add clarity to it, but on page three, line thirty-two, where Vice Chairman Lon was going through the actions that the town council are taking to date as it relates to the Northeast Direct Pipeline. On line thirty-two, it says, environmental services site evaluation committee, parentheses, SEC. And then on pages five and six, it refers consistently to the SEC. And I'm just wondering, because when I think SEC, I'm thinking the Securities and Exchange Commission. Do you think, for page five, just to repeat it one more time, what the SEC is? I mean, I'm, if it's, if it's redundant, I'll.
You could, you could also try just NHSEC.
Okay.
Would be another way to deal with it.
Yeah, I, just so that I think it's, it's more clear to reflect what the.
Particularly if you go back to the original site.
Correct.
And use that in, after the full title.
So on page three, instead of parentheses.
So on page three, SEC, just have it read, any.
N H S E C?
N H E S S E C. Or.
Is that, is that what it's called?
No. No. Or just N H S E C?
Yes.
Okay, fair enough. And just to have that reflected.
Any future reference?
Any future reference throughout the context of the minutes.
Okay. Good catch.
I did not find anything else, unless my colleagues have anything to add.
Any other changes from anyone else? Okay, I need a second.
Second.
Second by Lon Woods. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Again, six zero one, I'm abstaining. Okay, comments from the press. Done all right? Comments from the public. Comments, we, we made it before ten, though. Comments from the council. Yes, Finley?
I just wanted to take a quick moment to thank Public Works, working like maniacs as our overtime budget shows, and I think they've done an excellent job. And it's been a tough storm to keep up with, I guess the benefit has been powder, that's a little nicer, but it's been tons of powder, so, except for the end of my driveway that is always jam-packed, for some reason, I appreciate all their efforts.
You and every citizen in this.
No, it's the right turn. If your driveway is the first one after a right turn, it packs up the snow on the blade, you too. I will never buy another house that's the first driveway after a right turn. I won't do it. You still get it, not like me.
My neighbor across the street doesn't get it hardly at all. He's at the end of the cul-de-sac coming back. He's the last house before the right turn.
The luck of the draw. Thank you, Finley, anything else? Bill?
No.
Mr. Woods?
Thank you.
Nothing? Tom K?
Welcome back.
Yes.
Thank you, glad to be back. Boy, it was like, like coming back in as everything's all together. Tom Mahan, anything?
I have nothing.
Nothing, well, it's glad to be back, thank you very much. And with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Seconded.
Made by Lon Woods, seconded by Bill Boyd. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, seven.